... under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, hello everyone. Alice, you want to give us a roll call please? Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Okay, well, thanks everyone. Hope everybody had a good new year, holiday, all that good stuff. All right, couple of things. As we go into liaison reports, if anybody has anything, a couple of updates I wanted to make sure I put out there. One of them that's on the agenda is the Gauger Road closure. Ben and Tom, they worked real hard with Larry Walsh and company to find a solution to get Gauger open again. I know there was a lot of problem solving that had to go into it, there were concerns on the county, but you know, we continued to work with them until we found a solution. So, if I'm right, Ben, I think the barricades in the lower spot come down real soon, like what?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. The barricades will be, one of them will be relocated north of 147th on Gauger Road. The one south, I actually got diagram, if you don't mind, I'll go to the podium real quick.
Sure.
Makes more sense when you can see it. I think it's this one. So as you can see, well, you can see it pretty well there, but... The existing old barricades were by Lamont Road and 147th, and then down at Gauger Road and 151st. Both the old barricades will be removed on Friday this week. They will, one of them will be relocated to the area that says new barricades, that's a temporary situation. So, a traffic will finally be able to use 151st to go up to Gauger to 147th over to Lamont Road. That's kind of the old passage that everyone's used to doing. There would never was a road north of that, but ML and Heritage Business Park has completed that. And eventually you'll be able to go all the way through. In about ninety days, we will have a temporary signal installed at Gauger Road and 143rd. And that will allow us to remove the last temporary new barricade there just north of 147th. And then the condemnation case can go ahead and play out, you know, over time, and at least traffic will have a safe intersection. The county engineering department has wanted to realign that intersection at 143rd and Gauger. And so that's part of the necessary right-of-way acquisition that they have to do to get that put in permanently.
And because the condemnation case just takes an extraordinarily long time, county's agreed to put a temporary light on, so it'll be good.
Could you also kind of comment on the, how traffic is going to come from the north? Was that too early?
What do you mean?
The, for the commercial building, the large commercial warehouse distribution.
Yeah, yeah, Building Eight is the large 500,000 square foot building. That will be, they will have to utilize the southern exit until we get that temporary signal up in about ninety days. Construction traffic will be able to go through there, but through traffic will not be allowed. As a matter of fact, we'll have Lockport Police Department enforcing that. So there will be two barricades north of 147th, there will be a gap in them, but it's going to say "construction traffic only, no through traffic," and our police department will enforce that.
I'm answering questions.
Yes, I do. For liaison's report, you and I represent the Public Works, I'd like to congratulate our engineering department. We, they have received the American Public Works Association Public Works Project of the Year. This is for the Garfield Avenue reconstruction. And also Mark from Strand, I guess, was working with you on that project too, Amy, so is there anything else we want to talk on?
Yeah, I don't know if Amy wants to come up and talk about it a little bit at all, but Garfield was an STP-funded project. Eighty percent federal funds, twenty percent local share. I think they had a couple of interesting twists with that project, and they did a nice job, and Amy did a nice job with Strand in putting that all together.
Go ahead, thank you. Again, Amy works very hard on the projects we always do in town, as you know. Of course, she answers a lot of emails and phone calls as she gets some of the projects going, so again, we thank Amy for her hard work on this and achieving this. Thanks, Amy.
The Garfield's reconstruction project was a $1.1 million project that was partially federally funded at eighty percent with federal STP Surface Transportation Program funds that were distributed through Will County Governmental League. City's been very lucky over the last few years to receive several grants for projects, and this is just one of them. And we were also lucky to receive this award.
Well, thanks again, Amy. Darren?
Just before Christmas, I was able to, company Chief Lemming and Lieutenant Haring delivered, to deliver some turkeys and fixings to some people that, same people that received some things with the, from Lockport Love. The turkeys were provided by a Lockport resident by the name of Pinky Parker. Those that know Pinky know that he's one of the good guys here in town. He's a retired sheriff's, police sheriff's officer. And Pinky does a lot of great things for, to help people behind the scenes every year. Second thing here is, is the chief and, or in his administration, on New Year's Eve, went out on their own time and helped patrol with the other patrol officers. And they, they didn't have to, but they did, and I just want to thank the chief and Chief Haring and the deputy chief Huff and Sergeant...
Rizzi.
Rizzi. I always want to call him Rizzo. For doing that. Thank you.
All right, right on. Anybody else?
Yes. I'm happy to say that we are getting very close to finalizing our destinations and the type of signs that we will be putting up in the main gateway corridors. And Ben is going to give us a little bit of a slideshow here on the, the design that we have. Well, first of all, let me just tell you, on December 29th, Alderman Patracas joined us in a meeting to put in his expertise on the design, so that we could discuss what would be best. So between Ben Benson and Pam Herth and myself and Jody Mariano from Tesca?
Tesca?
Tesca Associates, we were able to kind of finalize the final design that we think will be appropriate for the, our main corridors. Our first sign that we are going to be working on is on 355 and 159th Street. And Ben, if you wouldn't mind kind of explaining the different signs that we're going to be putting in different areas, I appreciate that.
Sure. Yes, it was great, I mean, this all still isn't quite set in stone, and we'll be bringing it back to council, it's kind of a work in progress. But we wanted to show a little bit how some of the design elements have changed. You can see here the original, a very historic, you know, monument marker here at Ninth Street by the railroad. And we felt that keeping that true in other locations would be a good idea, so we've decided to try to go with a different type of design. In some locations, we will actually replace the existing one, like at Dell Park, to look, to look more like this. And then the new ones that we put in would also look like this on an exterior point, like at New Avenue and Archer Avenue. And then we would still embrace the, the Main Street signs and directional wayfinding signs that we have in the downtown and the parking with these other types of signs that you see by the train station. Couple of those will be more centralized in the town. And I think we've kind of decided the focus point, the first one we really need to work on is probably going to be on 159th and the right-of-way there. And that's an important part as you come into town, and we want to have this kind of same feature. We did include this, if you recall, a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, the digital LED sign was also approved in that same region, and we want to make sure that those two, we'll probably have to change the stone design in that one on the bottom so that it's more cohesive with what we're trying to do with the, what we call the Lockport limestone feel. And then here's just another little, little close-up of what we have existing that we're trying to emulate that in our new designs. You can see the, the relationship between the two. So, things continue to move along, and we do have some budget funds this year to get, get some of these installed and going. And so we'll, we'll be working on that as we continue to meet with our subcommittee. Just wanted to keep you apprised as to what we're doing.
I have a question. When we talked about this before, the, the subject of the stones from the Seven Arches Bridge could be incorporated, where exactly are those stones? Anybody know?
Yeah, they're on the Chevron property, if you go where the old guard check is.
There's a bunch of crates.
Okay. I think we were, when we talked about utilizing those stones, I think we were talking about the streetscape plan in the main part of downtown when we're going to try to do something with 2017 between Eighth and Eleventh.
I mean, they're very cool, and I think that sometimes reusing them, and I've talked to Amy about this, sometimes reusing them is more trouble than buying stone that can all be cut and, you know, dressed at the same time. But I think there's some really unusual pieces that probably can be worked into the streetscape, which I'll talk about here in a second once you guys are done. Anything else, Joanne?
No, I think that's it for right now.
All right, good, thanks.
Real quick on that, Mayor, so everyone noticed the difference there, the, those green panel signs are the ones that we have now. So we're trying to reuse the existing green signs.
Say "thank you," yeah.
And use that concept, so we're not creating something new. And then it, some of them said "historic Lockport," and the other ones, the ones that are farther out, like on 159th will just say "city of Lockport." Same style, same everything, but we're matching those things to kind of make it cohesive throughout the city. And that plan that you saw was kind of a start of a master plan to say, as funds are allocated, we can start putting signs up.
Sounds good.
I just have a question. I know Ben, like, digital sign, I know we talked to, like you said, a year and a half, I know it's, I remember talking about it, don't remember the gist of it, what, what we got out of it, what we're doing. But where is that, I mean, where is that staying? When is that going to go?
We're waiting for IDOT permit approval. Basically, that's still within 600 feet of 355, and so there was some additional approval processes we had to get from them. We have been in negotiations with them back and forth in regards to our, our application. I'm expecting to hear that that's going to be approved and receive a permit in the next thirty to sixty days. It'll probably take another sixty to ninety days to get it installed, so it should be operational by spring. And we'll be able to advertise our city events on that board as well.
I was going to say, I think we were going to capitalize on using that for our information, so, yeah.
Basically, there's several advertising flips on there of about fifteen seconds each, and there's six to eight rotations. And one of those rotations will be dedicated to the city of Lockport. And we'll be able to put our events, our emergency information, our, our nixols, you know, information about Main Street events, anything in the community we'll be able to advertise.
Right, okay. No, I'm just kind of looking forward to that, I guess, coming to, thank you.
And that's such a prime spot for that type of advertising, because unfortunately, that part of Lockport doesn't get all the information when we're doing some kind of activity in the downtown area, that kind of gets left out, and so this, it'll be a great addition.
Right, absolutely.
But I just wanted to add also, not only is the sign going to be a big thing on 355 and 159th Street, but we're going to try to utilize that median with perhaps, you know, later on with some, some trees lined up, you know, kind of just look very classy, you know, as you come into, you know, the city. It's really exciting that it's coming together.
Right on. Great job, everyone. All right, anything else? A couple of things on my end, that go along with most of the stuff we've been talking about, is on January 14th at 6:00 PM, we're going to have one of our Downtown Development Committee meetings. I've been meeting with them for, you know, on and off for a few months. They're made up of downtown business owners and residents. And it's primarily, we've been talking about, how are we going to put State Street back together when it's torn up in 2017? So that distance between Eighth and Tenth, which is the primary construction area, it's like, we don't want to just put everything back the way it is, it's a matter of, it's, it's one of these opportunities you get every fifty years to put it back right. So, we've been talking about it together as a group up until now. But on January 14th is when V3 Engineering and Tesca will be there as well, because they're the ones that'll actually do the architecture, actually do the design, kind of implement the things that we've been talking about as a group. And so, as we begin to get a better handle on that, we'll of course be coming to council with it. But in the meantime, it's looking good. I think it's, like I said, it's an opportunity to really turn it into what we all want it to be, which is a pedestrian-friendly area that is, you just, it's the kind of place you want to hang out and, and be a part of. And that's really, and whether it's using some of the old Seven Arches Bridge stone to, you know, mixing brick pavers and, and things like this, and whether we put trees in the ground now instead of those giant planters, because the vaults will be filled, all kind of stuff. So, any of you, of course, are welcome to be there at 6:00 PM on the fourteenth. I think we're going to do it up here instead of my office, because there'll be a few more people. And anyone from the public's welcome to come out too. You know, this is a good kickoff meeting, so if people want to get a better handle on it, that would be great. But, so that's, that's a good thing, really looking forward to that. Another thing, kind of, a part of that is Commerce Streets, you know, Ben and I and V3 have been, as we're trying to prepare for the 2017 construction, which will be very disruptive for the downtown businesses, is cleaning up stuff around it. One of the proposals we have is to clean up Commerce Street, and I think there's been some good ideas that have been proposed. So we'll bring that forth probably in the next meeting or two, so you can take a look at that. But it's way, everything from working with Dellwood Tire, Larry Bornhofen is willing to let us, you know, put some blacktop on there, put some stripes down for parking, and say, hey, you know what, it's available from 5:00 PM to midnight, you know, for, I mean, just on the weekends when they're not using it. So just finding some relationships with that will be beneficial. So there's a lot of good things going on to prepare for it as well. Let's see, what else I got here? Oh, as you guys know, the, you've heard the township is going to be moving on. It'll be, you know, a number of months still, as they're getting this new building that they've purchased organized. But the opportunities it creates for us are pretty big. Once they vacate the third floor, what we've talked about is consolidating our offices. Instead of having the planning department in a separate building, is we can able to bring that staff over here, we could put them up on the third floor, and we can have all our services in one building. And, you know, instead of having the water department, it can become the, you know, community service department, where you go for everything. You can start there, if you're looking for a building permit, or you're looking to pay your water bill, or, you know, you need a FOIA, you can go to one spot for it. And it'll be a lot easier for people instead of having to go to different buildings and such. So, that's all the kind of stuff we'll, we'll plan as we, you know, look forward to the, the township leaving and opening up space. And then, of course, it creates great opportunities for the old planning department building. It's a building that could be sold and put on the tax rolls, it's a building that could be opened for lease. But it would be nice to turn it into something that has a new function and a new life for the downtown as well. So, it's, it's some good opportunities, and I think it'll be nice to have everybody under one roof here, so. So that's something that's coming up. You know, Oakdale Days and Summer Art Series committees have been working hard, they got a lot of good things planned that are coming up. We will certainly be using those festivals again to promote regionally. You know, we've been working with the Heritage Corridor, because they do great buys for us, and it really spreads our advertising dollars. It's, it's helped tremendously put Lockport on the map, it's made a difference. I know when I talk to people at these festivals, like when I do the history tour, you know, talking to people in the history wagon, I mean, they're from all over now, as opposed to these to be much more local. But it's really putting Lockport on the map, which helps with everything we're trying to do. I had a meeting, going off on a little bit of a tangent, but the tie-in is I had a meeting with Tim Flanagan, who we're, you know, going to bring onboard for six months to help with, you know, some of the retail brokerage. When I was at his office last week, talking to the other brokers, they, they all know Lockport now, you know? I mean, it's out there. We're definitely doing what we counted and putting it on the map. Festivals like this are the method to the madness, that's what it's about. It's about getting our name out there, and it's a great way of doing it. Another thing too that's coming online is, on the website, we have a new collective community calendar. One of the things that I found is, you know, we have a lot of great organizations in town, whether it's, you know, The Moose, or St. Joe's, or Main Street, or, you know, Historical Society, you know, sometimes we don't always know what each other's doing. And so I brought all those entities together, so that we could all input what we're doing on a single community calendar, which will be on Lockport's website. So even for each other, we can get on there and say, oh, I didn't realize St. Joe's doing their carnival this weekend. I'll make sure I plan what I'm doing the following weekend. And so, that is up and running, and it'll start getting populated. All those entities have access to that calendar, put stuff on there. So, it'll also be good for just us as citizens to know when things are going on, and when we can participate, and what we can be part of. So that's all good. And like I just said a minute ago, when I, when I met with Flanagan in kind of a pre-meeting, I think it's going to be a really good year, 2016. We, as we say, it's like we're close to this one anchor, it just takes astonishingly slow, but it's, it's, it's looking good. And the brokers that I talked to when I was over in Oakbrook, where they all seemed to congregate, they've all, they're all excited about what's going on. So I think we'll see some good growth there as well. I think we have a good year to look forward to. And no small thanks to everybody who's been working hard up here, so, appreciate it. Oh, and by the way, I'm going to start doing some town hall meetings too, just to kind of help the public feel like they have some better access to asking questions. I'm going to do one in Lago Vista, which I know is kind of a closed club, but I will do it at their clubhouse. So for Lago residents, they're, they're welcome to come there, that'll be on, I think the thirtieth I'm doing it. And then, in the water bills, I'll talk about when I'll do the next one, I'll probably do it in February sometime, so I'll give people an opportunity. And we'll do it up here like we've done in the past, gives people an opportunity to ask questions and air their gripes and everything else, so that's a good, good way of doing it. Yeah, it's on the thirtieth in Lago, that's the first one. All right, I guess that's everything on my end, so we'll move on. What do you got going on, Ben?
Thank you Mayor, and members of the council, first item of business here for 2016 is CA1, it's the Nycor Natural Gas Franchise Ordinance Agreement. This city in 2009 decided to participate with the Northern Illinois Municipal Natural Gas Franchise Consortium, which is about thirty-eight communities in the Chicagoland area that wanted to negotiate with Nycor together as a consortium. So, they've asked us to pass this in ordinance form, and we've attached a draft of that for your review. There's been obviously quite a few changes since the last one, it did expire back in 2009. And unfortunately, it's just taken a long time with attorney's help. You know, Nycor had, has had a couple of management changes and a couple of ownership changes, but we're finally bringing this back to you. We have paid some membership fees to be part of this consortium, about five or six thousand dollars in total. But we feel that this agreement coming back has increased in revenue for the city that will more than pay that back. So, the city was approximately getting about twenty-five thousand dollars a year from Nycor for their right-of-way agreement and franchise agreement. And basically, what we're talking about here is the, the lands and right-of-ways that the city owns. Many utility companies need to access those, those properties and to run their lines to services to their other customers. And so the city is able to have insurance requirements and indemnity clauses and things, and contracts with them, and also receive some, some fees and revenues from those processes. So, we're recommending that we take the cash option on this. We, we do have the option in the agreement to take cash or free gas. Lisa and I did an internal analysis about the amount of gas we purchase per year, and the amount of cash that we can get from this. We'll see that, and we've certainly, we've been taking cash in the prior agreement as well. There is a, a section in there that we'd be able to change that at our discretion every three years. So if the price of, of gas becomes extreme, and we feel the value is better to take gas on our usage in our facilities, we'll certainly come back to the council at a later date to try to do that. Right now, we're looking to get about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year annually from this franchise agreement. We do have a one-time kind of a signing bonus for being a participant in this consortium, which is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that includes an increase in our thermal amount, an increase from our population, about a twenty percent increase in, in the revenues in regards to the, the thermal allocations. This will be a twenty-five-year contract term. You know, there's a lot of sections in there, but I'll just highlight a few of them, you know, the municipal regulations. The important part about that is it means that these franchises agreements, you know, Nycor agrees to comply with local and applicable right-of-way and tree and building regulations. So they really need to adhere to our local ordinances, so that's an important thing. Emergency response, emergency response is in there, about Nycor having to respond to emergencies within twenty-four hours. Certainly the compensation for the right-of-way that I discussed, and the one-time payment. I think one of the biggest covenants we have in here is the Most Favored Nations Clause. And what that really means is, if any other city or group of cities comes in behind us and is able to negotiate a deal that is far, you know, superior, or has more revenues, or we feel is an enhancement to ours, we are able to upgrade to that agreement. So, it's an important thing to have, it gives us the opportunity to protect ourselves going forward. So, certainly there'll be some communication and coordination with our capital improvement plan. We wanted to make sure, some, make sure that that language was in there, that if we requested it and required it, they would have to come out and help us, you know, coordinate that. And the effective date for this agreement, even though today is January 6th, and we're looking to get your feedback on this, and hopefully put it on consent for January 20th, is the effective date will go back to January 1st. What's going to happen is, all thirty-eight communities are bringing this agreement to their boards for approval. And once they get enough of them together, Nycor will start signing off on them and send us, send us back signed agreements and consent agreements. And they will send us our, our bonus money and our annual contribution for the year, and it will be retro to January 1st. So, my guess is we would receive this funding as early as February or March for 2016. And then it'll be 2016 and the next twenty-five years. So with that, we had the ordinance agreement in the packet, and I'm certainly open to taking any questions.
I, I talked to you a little bit earlier about this, Ben, earlier in the week, and thanks, you answered all my questions, but now I'm just thinking about this money when it does come in. What fund does this go into?
I think it goes in the general fund, doesn't it, Lisa? Yeah.
Okay, just curious, okay.
It's not, it's not earmarked for any one particular thing, it just goes into city's general revenues.
I just wanted to hear, everybody hear what I was thinking.
Anything else? Something we need on a agenda then, for next, next time?
Yes, on January 20th, we'd like to get approval.
We all good with the consent on this? All right, consent please, Alice. Thank you. Holy moly, I think that's it. Any new business out there? I did tell my daughter Zoe that I would announce her little library that she set up in the lobby. Did you see that thing? I made that out of my old piano.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah, that little library is like this, it's this, they're all over the world, it's like this organization that people make little kind of boxes, and they, they put them out in their yards or public spaces, and they put books in them, and you take a book, leave a book, you know? Right?
Oh, neat, yeah.
Yeah, I was actually going to put it in my yard, but it looks so cool, I'm like, I don't want to leave it outside, it's going to, you know? We put it in the lobby. So, yeah, so it's, I told her I didn't announce it, so there you go. Yes, I have to, yeah, the one for the, for the yard. But I figured it's a good use of the piano, since it was dead.
Good idea.
Put Zoe in the paper.
Yes, yeah.
Zoe's the library.
All right, if nothing else, then we'll look to adjourn. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
JR, and Bob, all in favor? Okay. All right, we'll just roll right on, eh? Eh? Council. All right, do another roll call. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
All right, looking to have a consent agenda, can I have a motion for a consent agenda?
Don't move.
Bob?
I'll second.
Second by JR, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so on the consent agenda tonight, we have our approval of our city council meeting minutes from December 16th, committee of the whole meeting minutes from December 16th, our payroll ending December 20th. There is the McGregor Road Platte subdivision, Resolution 16001. We had an incentive agreement with Magenta Plastics. There was a professional services agreement with Casey Realty, that's the Tim Flanagan. There is the developmental engineering services agreement. And what else? We also have Resolution Ordinance, rather, Number 16001, which is the engineering review fees and engineering inspection fees. We had some snow equipment, Resolution 15094, and then there was a Strand and Associates' task order to begin work on the NPDES. So, with all that, looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got Brian and Joanne, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Alright, Tom, are you taking this one?
We have presented to you a proposal for a moratorium on the, the smoke shops, vape shops, and e-cigarette shops. The proposal was to call for a six-month moratorium so the staff would have an opportunity to review what other communities are doing with the zoning on these types of uses. We do have some shops that have opened up already and some that have expressed interest. It would be for anybody in the future who would approach us, we would let them know that there's a six-month moratorium. The proposed resolution hasn't changed since you last reviewed it at the last meeting. The staff is recommending its approval to impose a six-month moratorium so we can report back to you our findings and make recommendations.
Alright, looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Brian?
Second.
Seconded by Chris?
I just have a couple of comments. I'm going to be voting yes tonight, but I'm voting yes with some reservations. I'm supposed to voice those reservations to the mayor and city attorney and other, city attorney, city administrator. All I ask is during the next six months is why we are researching this, is that at the end of the, I don't, I don't, I don't want six months from now to say, okay, here's, here's what we found out. I would like to actually have a discussion over the next six months, maybe multiple times in old business and the committee of the whole, to discuss some of these reservations that I have.
Okay.
That's all.
That's what we're here for. Alright.
I, I just want to say, yeah, I think it's a good idea that the, the staff has decided to take a look at this a little deeper and thought, I know, I, I went by, let's just say a vape shop not too long ago in nearby community, and it was just full of smoke, it was just like you drive by and it's just like one big cloud in there, it's like, I don't know, I, I don't, I just got some, my ideas of driving by town and looking at through your window, seeing that doesn't seem like a good idea to me, but I don't know if we can, if we open shops, we say you can't smoke inside, or what have you, but those are some of the things I thought was a little odd to drive by and see that.
So. Anything else for now? As we take a pause to look at this over the next six months? Alright, well, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to do a roll call on it? Alright, roll, roll call.
Patracas?
Yes.
Capadona?
Yes.
Loughley?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Baskin?
Yes.
Garetta?
Yes.
Bartelson?
Yes.
Seven Hayes, Merchant County.
Alrighty. Amy, want to talk about the bridge?
In late 2013, the city applied for a surface transportation, uh, bridge program funding for the replacement of the Second Street Bridge on the west side of Second Street closest to the Heritage Village park. In October, we don't, we were notified, in October 2013, we were notified that we were to receive the funding, and in early 2014, we went through the formal RFQ process to select the consulting engineer that would be, be doing the Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering. Baxter and Woodman was the engineer that we selected at that time, we awarded the Phase 1 contract at that time to Baxter and Woodman, and over the last year and a half, they have worked on this Phase 1 portion of the contract, and it was submitted to IDOT for review and final approval just prior to Christmas. IDOT makes us wait until Phase 1 report is submitted and close to being approved before we can apply for Phase 2 funding and go through the Phase 2 process. So, now we're able to get the Phase 2 agreements approved and send those off to IDOT for review and approval, so that we can keep the project moving along and get it constructed in a timely manner. So, the city received the proposal from Baxter and Woodman for the Phase 2 portion of the project in the amount of $136,680. This is paid for by the grant at 80%, so the local match, the city's portion of this would only be $27,336. The recommendation is the, the city enter into an agreement with Baxter and Woodman for a cost of $136,680.
Okay, have you, you guys have seen pictures of this, right? It's really good, it fits with the character down there, it's going to be a, a nice, you know, kind of end cap to the Heritage Village and what we're trying to do down there, so. Alright, that's great. I'm looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I second.
JR, Joanne, can I have a roll call, please?
Patracas?
Yes.
Capadona?
Yes.
Loughley?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Baskin?
Yes.
Garetta?
Yes.
Bartelson?
Yes.
Seven Hayes, Merchant County.
Alright, thank you. We'll have to talk to Chevron to get that guard check moved before the new bridge goes up, we don't want to scrape up our new. That's right, don't want any scratches. That's supposed to happen soon, actually, so it'll actually be a, a nice addition to the village, so. Alright, anything else, any new stuff again? Just here. Alright, well, if there's nothing else, then we'll have a motion to, to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by JR, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.